We work for the Stewart County Sheriff's Office. Back here. I know the Sheriff Greg has brought the issue of pay to you back in October. With the new county budget being put together for the upcoming year, we want to keep this issue at the forefront. Our pay is not competitive with any county surrounding us and is one of the lowest in the state. We cannot recruit, nor can we keep good people when you start their pay at eleven dollars and ninety cents an hour and offer very little salary increases for those who stay. We are the lowest-paid county employees and we feel our job is very important. We enjoy our work but cannot support and raise a family on what we are being paid. We are asking that you pay our pay concerns seriously and do what is right and what is needed to give us a good and competitive wage in this upcoming budget. Please keep in mind that we pay the same prices that each of you do for groceries, gas, and electricity. We're asking that our pay is addressed so that we can continue to work here in Stewart County. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Keno. This is my son Nigel. We own a home on the lake near Bumbus Mills. Over the New Year's holiday, we had an unexpected visitor. A stray dog who our neighbors had seen, but he wouldn't let anyone near him, decided that we should be his people. We have two dogs of our own. We had family visiting. We had two more dogs. We're talking in a small lake house. So, I'm gonna let Nigel take it from here because there was no way we could take this dog, as sweet as he was.
Yeah, I'm Nigel Keno. Basically, wanted to come here and talk about how difficult it was to find this dog a place to go. I'm a tour musician. I couldn't take him. We have, I live in Nashville. They have a lake house up here. My sister couldn't take him. They live in Illinois. I have two dogs and plenty of other animals in the house. And I spent the entire day on Facebook, on the phone, online, trying to find anywhere that would take this dog because I didn't want to just leave it. And finally, somebody did come through, a local, I think it was Hot Rods or something like that came and got him, but they couldn't get him until after we'd left. And it was just a really frustrating experience and I have, there was just no resources and no help here. And I just think it's really important that you guys put something towards animal control or just anything to help out with this problem because I've heard it's a problem in the county just in general. So, that's all. Thanks. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. My name is Pamela Adams and I live in a very rural community off of 232 that's gated and I have just a smattering of neighbors. And back in December, I had two unexpected visitors. One was a purebred collie and one was a beautiful blue-eyed pit bull mix and rather big dogs. They came on my property and I thought maybe holidays that maybe someone had family visiting or some distant neighbors, their dogs got out. And that was on a Tuesday evening. I fed them some hot dogs, put them up in my pole barn for the night. Got up Wednesday morning, the first people I called was the Sheriff's Office and they gave me a couple of phone numbers. The first person I called, they, I waited for them to get back to me and I just kept trying. I called my bed. I called the mayor's office. So, that was on Wednesday morning. Didn't really hear back from anyone. Started searching all the Facebook groups and I couldn't find any help with these two big dogs. I have three cats. I don't have a fence. I don't care for dogs. I care for them, but I don't have the place to care for them. So, I had these dogs from Sunday until I talked to someone on Saturday evening. That's, and I've been trying every day, all day. And someone, the dogs were infested with big ticks and one had a couple of bite injuries and something. So, anyway, this wonderful, kind lady said to me that she could, she would be more than happy to bring me medicine for the ticks, maybe to dehorn them, and help get me set up for long-term fostering until I could find a home for these dogs. And that was on Saturday night. So, all night long, I really wrestled with this and what to do. And my primary concern was for my three girls, my three cats. And I have cats and I have an invisible fence. They have collared. I keep my pets contained. So, Saturday night, very sleepless and I got up Saturday, Sunday morning and I called the Sheriff's Office because I did not take care of these dogs and no one was there to help. And I called the Sheriff's Office on Sunday morning and we were closing throat, asked them to send someone of authority out to my place to come and get these dogs and euthanize them humanely however they see fit, but I cannot care for them and no one else wants them. Well, I think they thought I was probably pretty damn crazy, but what else was I gonna do? I could not find help for these two big dogs. So, they sent a deputy to come and get, come and take a look. And they ended up calling, the very first person that the Sheriff's Office gave me the number to, the officer happened to be related to that woman whose facility was already overrun. They had family issues going on. They were kind of closed down. Anyway, they did come and get the dogs on Monday. One dog has been adopted, but the other lives in a cage. And very new to all of this and seeing how many pets are dropped and abandoned in this area has just been devastating. So, if there's any help, any help, these animals need somebody.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out. If you would stand, I'd ask you to wish a blessing, please. For the occasion.
I'm a Christian, Father. We thank you for the day that you blessed us with. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. Lord, we ask that you be with all of us that's here representing the county tonight. Lord, we ask that you be with the mayor and his staff as they lead the county and do the county's business and all of those that are elected to hold our office, Lord. Lord, we ask that you be with our military at home and around the world to protect us every day. Lord, be with us throughout this meeting and let us do the county's business in calm and grief and patience. Lord, be with us and guide us, Jesus Christ. Amen. They live.
Amen.
To the light of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, and universal liberty just as strong.
Yes, Tess. Yes. I'll try to talk loud. These are brand-new, so. All right, we'll start off with a roll call.
Elijah Thomas.
Here.
Brian Teber.
Yep.
Rick Joyner.
Here.
Randall Redman.
Here.
Shane Hakes.
Here.
Eric Watkins.
Here.
Terry Pichu.
Here.
Vince Gray.
Here.
Archie Pryor.
Here.
Melissa Fields.
Here.
Bradley Jones.
Here.
Clint Mathis.
Here.
Mark George.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Number five on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. Don't move them, sir. Have a first, do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Are you opposed? Item number six is approval of the quarterly reports.
Oh, approve.
I have a first. I have a second. Do I have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Heather. Stewart County Debt Management Policy Annual Review.
Commissioner, this is the same debt policy that was approved originally back in April 2012 by state statute. We have to make sure that it is reviewed every year as in the original package set out. There did no changes, so this is just our annual review.
Motion to approve. Mr. Joyner.
Second.
Second by Mr. Redman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, Stewart County's Cash Flow Forecast. I will also give to Ms. Heather.
This goes along with the item before. Basically, this is just review as well, just showing what the actuals were for the Debt Service Fund from July all the way through December and then the estimates from January through June. As you can see, we started with cash of close to 3.8 billion and I expect the cash to be that much, if not more, at the end of the year.
That's just the forecast, guys. Item number nine, we'd like to approve the notaries and one renewal.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Fields.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dorz. Shall there be any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 10, we will also give you some information from Ms. Heather. Guys, before, she, she don't want me to say this, I'm gonna say it anyway, though. This is number 10, what you're about to hear. I didn't understand it at first until I got to reading on it a little bit. This is all attributed to her. It's all attributed to her. Everything she does in our office, keeping up with the record she keeps up. I know some of you guys call sometimes and you're like, can't get ahold of Heather or whatever. It's because she's doing something important and this will prove it. Go ahead. Sorry.
Well, thank you, Mayor. This, I appreciate the shout-out to myself. This is actually something that I heard Mr. Commissioner Dorz say when, too many meetings ago, about the debt levels that the county had just 10 years ago. In 2013, we had debt levels, that's principal and interest that was owed, of roughly almost forty million dollars. At the end of this fiscal year, will be roughly sixteen million dollars. So, for years, I've been trying to work with Moody's. They are usually the ones who rate our debt. We have been rated an A2 for quite a number of years now, at least 10-plus. So, unfortunately, you usually can't get an air rating analysis unless you go to issue debt with a big bond. When you issue debt and they, you have to pay. Or you just go out to a company like Moody's and you do it. However, there's been some changes in the federal government and with the way that they're looking at government bonds, securities, et cetera, so Moody's is now required to do this. So, they came out, we had an outlook last year, there was an upward outlook, and then what, they went ahead and did a full-blown rating review with us and our bond ratings in Stewart County did increase one level. So, what that means basically is that if we do have to issue debt in the future, we're gonna get lower interest rates. We are more secure. A rating A2 puts you basically at a prime level one or two, where an A1, which is what we are now, is absolutely a prime level one. So, it just makes you more secure, more attractive to potential investors, so. But it is a big thing that commissioners over the years have worked very hard to get this debt down. I appreciate all the support they give our office, so it's good for everyone.
Item number 11, we go to budget amendments. I'll give this to Chairman Dorz.
Guys, on page 30, a little bit, that one works.
Pushing way too many.
The election commission is line item transfer. Regular deeds, line item transfer. Page 30 is all line item transfers. Page 31, all line item transfers. Page 32, we're all line item transfers. Page 33, we've got the new monies upgrading computers in the mayor's office. We have some state grants for voting machines, which is a huge amount that we've been paying up when we get the grant. New monies for appraisal of the ballpark and this is because we're going to get, try and get grants to upgrade the ballpark. And that table of grades, we're okay. And Sheriff's Office Insurance Recovery. The coroner has to have more money and I think the new monies, they have to get them through the year. Page 34, we have our western emergency medical. The EMS is wanting to upgrade a part-time employee that's full-time and that's what it's gonna take to get it to the end of the year. We have some issues about some of the people without them, but we did vote to approve it. The health department has, this is a grant and they're just upgrading the grant on the way it's having. I think they're done with us. The other one is a DGA grant, 100 percent. The next one is Tennessee River Tourism. We are going to use some of that money to pay someone, what is it? Okay, yeah, we put a new air conditioner on the block, that's right. And let's see, boat and service officer. And have one was retiring and one was working to learn the business, maybe have a little extra money for now. Page 41 is the explanation of that employee. He was full-time, part-time, full-time. Page 42 is, is new monies and that's from the building art funds, trying to finish the, approve on the basement. And that's getting it out and getting it in where they can use it. 43 is a highway and he's a line item transfer. He's budgeted, financial, six, we're going to approve. At this time, all of them are motioned to approve.
Motion to approve by Chairman Dorz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fields. Any discussion?
Yeah. On the voting thing, did Daniel come and say what kind of machine he was voting for?
He's here. He's here, but they're required in the state, so he's got a paper credit that he wanted to have.
Well, I know it's required, because I mean, they got different options because I know a guy that talks to me, who's pushing machines. I was just trying to decide what they're deciding.
He was here during the budget and finance meeting. Thank you, Slim.
I mean, I can speak, I don't know the exact question to change, but I do know he has to put out an RFP, request for proposals, so it's something you can talk to him beforehand. Basically, we haven't even got to bid specs. He'll have to write the bid specs, he'll come to my office to review for legal, and then he'll have to have, look at all the bidders and go with the best value. So, that hasn't happened yet, so that's certainly something that might still be discussed if there's different options you know of.
I do know that he's had several vendors up there, but I don't know.
One of the, from the analysts, does that say full-time clerk? Is that what they want to move to?
Yes, as my understanding it is.
Secretary? At fourteen twenty-eight an hour, and we pay our jailers at eleven ninety an hour?
Do you have a question?
No, I just made a statement. You know, we're gonna pay somebody a better clerk. At fourteen twenty-eight, I think I'm full-time, I pay our jailers, nothing but ninety cents an hour. Somebody needs to read up to that.
Wouldn't argue that point at all. Is there any further discussion?
Is this someone who's in the library?
No, that would be a fair rating.
So.
I'll let him answer that.
The library that asks him to, for pay raises for other employees, we ask him to wait a little longer, okay? If this is part-time employee, they're willing to raise.
The only thing that I understood, and this is throughout the weekend speaking with, listening here today, was his revenues are up an extreme amount, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, and he's saying she could keep up with last year's revenues, she can't keep up with this year's revenues. Is, am I understanding that and stating that right?
Yes.
So, basically, this is gonna pay for itself.
We would, you know, I can't speak to the year-end budget, but it definitely has that perception at this time, yes, so. Do we have any further discussion?
Hey, can y'all speak up to, we can hear back in here?
We have brand-new mics that were purchased that are.
Well, actually, they're all out here just a bunch of months.
Gotcha. So, there is, will there be any further discussion on budget amendments? Having no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Eric Watkins.
Yes.
Terry Pichu.
Yes.
Yes.
Archie Pryor.
Yes.
Melissa Fields.
Yes.
Bradley Jones.
Yes.
Clint Mathis.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Elijah Thomas.
Yes.
Brian Teber.
No.
Rick Joyner.
Yes.
Randall Redman.
Yes.
Shane Hakes.
Yes.
Item number 13 is the approval of county committee appointments due to reservations. Commissioner Drew Shepard and Ms. Kendra, once you're ready, if you've had time to look over these.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Second. Second by Mr. Joyner. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 14 is the appointment of new library board members. That looks to be term limits expire June 26. Motion to approve. Second by Ms. Fields. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 15 is permission granting Tennessee Department of Transportation to put a turning lane at the Stewart County entrance of the industrial park. We were asked by the shipboard to have a resolution in place and approve it, giving T-Doc the approval to do such. That's just formality. They need approval from both counties to do such. We have several of their board members, both of their board members here tonight.
Both will approve.
Second by Ms. Pichu. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we were gonna discuss the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I want to introduce a gentleman from the state. He's gonna show you what our, our high school did and probably saved us a hundred and sixty to two hundred thousand dollars. This is not a finished, but it's, it's pretty close. And he's just gonna run through and hit some highlights, then I'll discuss the grant with you further. This is Mr. George Brogdon with the state and he has, he has been vital in helping us with this grant, so thank you, George.
Thank you, Mayor. George Brogdon, TDEC Recreation Resources Division, for about three more weeks and then I'm gonna have my second retirement. TDEC asked me before I left to do a college project with some county. I have Weston City, thirty-three counties, and I met with the mayor, Charles Parks, and eventually Mayor Baldwin. Back in September, we met again and we began a process in November. Usually, this is about a six-to-nine month process. We're doing it about three months because we want to put you in a position. TDEC, very quickly, I'll gap in a couple of the presentations to see if you have any questions and then we take questions at the end. But this is a Park and Recreation system-wide master plan and there are several requirements that have to be met in the plan, which is a reason that we have certain things in the plan. You may say, why is that in there? Because we need that in there for it to be accepted and be able to apply the grant. So, we'll run through here.
Second by Commissioner Fields. Any discussion?
Yeah. I don't know voting. Daniel come and say what kind of machine you're voting for.
Uh, he's here. He's here, but they're required in the state. He's got a paper credit.
Well, I know it's required, because I mean, we've got different options, because I know a guy that talks to me. It's a machine, you know, I just try to decide what they decide.
He was here during the budget and finance meeting. Thank you, Slim.
I mean, I don't know the exact question she's pushing, but I do know he has to put out an RFP, request for proposals, so it's something you can talk to him beforehand. Basically, we haven't even got to bid specs. He'll have to write with bid specs, so he'll come to my office to review for legal. And then he'll have to have, look at all the bidders and go with the best value. So, that hasn't happened yet, so that's certainly something that might still be discussed if there's different options you know of.
I do know that he's had several vendors up there, but I don't know.
One of the, from the analysts, does that say full-time clerical? Is what they want to move through?
Yes, as my understanding it is.
Secretary? At fourteen twenty-eight an hour, and we pay our jailers eleven ninety an hour?
What, you have, or do you have a question?
No, I'm just making a statement, you know, we're gonna pay somebody a better clerical. At fourteen twenty-eight, I think I'm full-time, and pay our jailers, none of them lost ninety cents an hour. Somebody needs to read up to that.
Wouldn't argue that point at all. Is there any further discussion?
Is this someone who?
No, that would be fair enough.
So.
I wanted to hear for the budget finding, if you have to.
I'll let him answer that.
The library that asked him to, for pay raises for other employees, we asked him to wait until the day, okay? If this is part of an employee that won't raise.
The only thing that I understood, and this is throughout the weekend speaking with, listening here today, was his revenues are up an extreme amount, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And he's saying she could keep up with last year's revenues, she can't keep up with this year's revenues. Is, am I understanding that and stating that right?
Yes.
Basically, this is gonna pay for itself.
We would, you know, I can't speak to the year end budget, but it definitely has that perception at this time, yes, so. Do we have any further discussion?
Hey, can y'all speak up to, we can hear back in here?
We have brand-new mics that were purchased that are.
Well, actually, I'm here just on a month.
Gotcha. So, there is, will there be any further discussion on budget amendments? Having no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Eric Watkins?
Yes.
Terry Pichi?
Yes.
Vince Gray?
Yes.
Archie Pryor?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Bradley Jones?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Mark George?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teber?
No.
Rick Joyner?
Yes.
Randall Redman? Shane Hakes?
Yes.
Thirteen to one, so that carries. Number twelve is approval of budget amendment for December the fifth. I know we stated that up here, but after Ms. Natalie got back to the office, I had left the library deal in there, and Commissioner Joyner's during the meeting, reminded me that I did after we'd already voted on it and accepted it. So, that got brought out, and we did strike that at the time, but we can't find where we went back and approved that. And that would be what you, what is the budget amendment from December the fifth. And that is in the minutes.
With the motion on second already made, we just didn't vote on it.
We just didn't vote on it. So, we just want, she didn't think there would be a problem, neither did Ms. Heather, but we're gonna be transparent, and we're gonna hold this stuff together, so I, it was just better for us to come back and vote on it. So, I would accept a motion to approve the budget amendments from December the fifth.
Okay.
Second.
Shall there be any discussion? Being of monetary value, I ask for another roll call, please.
Eric Watkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Terry Pichi?
Yes.
Vince Gray?
Yes.
Archie Pryor?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Bradley Jones?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Mark George?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teber?
Yes.
Rick Joyner?
Yes.
Randall Redman?
Yes.
Shane Hakes?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is the approval of county committee appointments due to reservations. Commissioner Drew Shepard and Ms. Kendra Buncherelli. You've had time to look over these.
Motion approved.
Motion's approved?
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyner, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number fourteen is the appointment of new library board members. That looks to be term limits expire June twenty-sixth. Motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Watkins.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fields. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number fifteen is permission granting Tennessee Department of Transportation to put a turning lane at the Stewart County entrance of the industrial park. We were asked by the shipboard to have a resolution in place and approve it, giving T-Doc the approval to do such. That's just formality, they need approval from both counties to do such. We have several of their board members, both of their board members here tonight.
Motion approved.
Second by Mr. Pichi. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we were gonna discuss the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I want to introduce a gentleman from the state, he's gonna show you what our high school did, and probably saved us a hundred and sixty to two hundred thousand dollars. This is not a finish, but it's pretty close. And he's just gonna run through and hit some highlights, and I'll discuss the grant with you further. This is Mr. George Brogdon with the state, and he has, he has been vital in helping us with this grant, so thank you, George.
Thank you, Mayor. George Brogdon, T-DAC Recreation Resources Division. For about three more weeks, then I'm gonna have my second retirement. T-DAC asked me before I left to do a college project with some county, I have western city, thirty-three counties. And I met with the mayor, Charles Parks, and eventually Mayor Baldwin. Back in September, we met again, and we began a process in November. Usually, this is about a six-to-nine month process, we're doing it about three months. Because we want to put you in a position, T-DAC, very quickly, you have a, I'll gap in a couple of the presentations to see if you have any questions, and then we take questions at the end. But this is a park and recreation system-wide master plan, and there are several requirements that have to be met in the plan, which is a reason that we have certain things in the plan. You may say, why is that in there? Because we need that in there for it to be accepted and be able to apply to the grant. So, we'll run through here. You're okay, it's a drawn password, let's try it again. I thought it was the state, and I wanted to pay me overtime or something, but that's. So, we, I'll be going through the document, this is a preliminary document, because it won't be filed till all approvals from the three different government entities. Just, we have histories of your different cities and county. And then we have to show demographics, the high school students did all these graphs and all the research. And they've done a great job, shows your population, shows a modest growth going into 2032. This is a ten-year plan. So, it will keep your, it has to be up at halfway, but it will keep your county and cities eligible for grants. They broke it down by median age. I'll just kinda go through here and then hit the ones that we want you to look at. This one is very unusual, about eighty-six percent of your population in south side incorporated areas, usually it's kinda the other way around, so that's gonna reinforce one of the findings, things and recommendations we have. There's the districts, we're gonna come back to a modified map of that. People per square mile in the districts. Education. There you see, you have an educated community. Income. Most of this came from the UTE Wood Center. By industry. This one's really interesting. Do people value living in Stewart County? Well, when you look at this and see eight percent that make a ninety-minute commute each way, and then if you, if you put together the eighteen percent, the five percent, and nine, then fourteen, you're looking at thirty-two, thirty-three percent of the community. All right, does that help you out a little? Okay. You're looking at thirty-three percent of the community that drives forty-five minutes or more each way. That tells me they value living here. And that's a real compliment, and something that we hope to, through our grants and Park and Recreation technical assistance, bring your quality of life even higher with our leisure opportunities. Average house size is two point five seven, probably a little bit lower than the state averages. Ownership. This is an important index here, Ability to Pay Index. Currently, our grants have specified matches, fifty-fifty for LPRF, eighty-twenty, you're doing the twenty, the government doing eighty for recreation trails programs, and LWCF is fifty-fifty. It's being considered by the legislature to use, T-Doc already uses this in some cases, using the Ability to Pay Index, and if that's so, instead of you having to do a hundred percent of the match, for instance, Stewart County has a sixty percent ability to pay, Dover's at thirty, and Cumberland City at twenty. That would give them, all of you, great advantages, and you can get more match for your dollars if this is approved. So, we're showing this because on this grant, they won't apply, but we hope to see you apply for future grants, and it could well then be applied. And you can Google this and find all this information. Ability to pay indexes. Access to exercise opportunities, climate. Okay, so our input process, I'll go through this real quick. On the, and again, many of you were here, on the fourteenth of November, we had, I've done a ton of these, we've never done with the high school students, it's great. And I thought it's thirty-five high school students, we got great input. And you can see, we did a strategic planning process where they get to rank different projects. So, this just wasn't, this was done consistently throughout, and we had students involved. And then we had one that evening, I saw some of you there, at the high school on the fourteenth of, evening of the fourteenth. We made visits to the senior center and got input there from the seniors, and it was very helpful. Tried to look at all aspects of your community, everything. And then, let's see, Cumberland City was probably the most fun, because I've done a hundred, two hundred of these meetings over my career, and I've never done one in a fire hall before, so fortunately, we got no calls when we were there. And with great input, and it was, you can see all of these, I've been to these communities where there's me, myself, and I, maybe a couple of other people, we had turned out, and that was just incredible. And again, all of this format, narratives, everything was done by the students at Stewart County High School, digital business design class. We just want analysis, what's your strength in the community? See some of those. What are your weaknesses? Opportunities? And threats, and these are always important, because strategically, you may position yourself where a threat can become an opportunity, so, and a weakness as well. We did a survey, and I appreciate the, there's a focus group of individuals that met earlier tonight, that met three times during this process, they helped us really get great surveys. We'll go through these pretty quickly, this is where the surveys were, came from. See, they probably have family four at thirty-nine percent, family two at twenty-five percent. How often do you use these, and you can see the frequency, Flint Creek is used a lot, Dires Creek, Isis Creek some, and then Stewart County Activity Center as well. Well, Senior Activity Center, and then the, down here, Stewart County Athletic Association Complex. And there's the station by location. Everyone loves, I haven't been to Eagle Fest, but I need to put on my calendar, because on the survey, everybody loves Eagle Fest. So, must be a great area. Another thing that's different, looking at yours, is down here, forty-four percent vote, use the vote ramp, thirty-two percent fishing, I'm a fisherman, so I love that voting, it's at thirty-seven percent. So, of the respondents, forty-four percent use your vote ramps, which is a pleasure of throughout the county. Question five. I don't know where that came from. How satisfied are you with parks and recreation facilities in Stewart County? And you see seventeen, very satisfied, thirty-two percent, twenty-two percent. See what I see? But that's a great opportunity, because money's available, grants are available, and we can put you in a position to, and you know, to serve a lot of people that would like to be satisfied. How accessible? Most people think somewhat are varied, and the ones that had questions about it are ADA access, water access, public transportation, and so on, lighting. How do you hear about things? And then go over there, but. Recreation activities, a lot of people have to go outside, if you wanna go to the swimming pool, splash pad, a lot of activities, you have to go outside the city or even Stewart County. And they go a lot of locations outside. Would you like to see additional parks in Stewart County? New parks, fifty-one percent said yes, five percent no, and then the other forty-four percent did not respond. Additional park locations, Park Space District, Indian mound, a twelve percent of respondents, out of water, go for Big Rock. You'll see just about every community, listen, there are bumping smiles. So, behind the, behind the tracks for some, I don't know about that one, but we put everything down that came here. And important question here, I would be in favor of newer increasing existing financial methods to expand facilities and cover the city, donors here at County. Two percent disagree of the respondents, thirty-nine percent agree, twenty-four percent strongly agree. And that's, so you have eighty-three percent that agree or strongly agree. How important do you think it is to provide newer improved recreation facilities and activities for our community? Twenty percent believe it's important, sixty-six percent extremely important, so that's eighty-six percent important or above. And then, please provide any other current suggestions, what do you want to see, basically? And you'll see, them to bottom, we'll start there, people want places to walk that are safe, possibly lit, they wanna be able to ride their bikes, they'd like to be along the river, greenways. We have grants for this, there are eighty-twenty grants, so we can, we can take care of those things. A lot of people want a splash pad, apparently people go to Paris Landy, not Paris Landy, Paris, the city, and use their splash pad as well as some in Clarksville. Swimming pool, they closed the swimming pool in Paris Landy State Park a couple of years ago, three years ago. For COVID, it never opened up, and I don't think it exists anymore, so it's not gonna be reopened. So, that's one of the items. A community center, that could be of, for all ages, all times of the day, incredible programming to be done there. Playground, senior activities, pickleball. Soccer showed up on some other methods, other than the survey, as the football, bathrooms, et cetera. We'll go through all those, but that's what people would like to see. So, we're using all of this information as we come to our, our recommendations. You see, these are present programs, my battery's running low. I did the. I did the first presentation at five o'clock today, so. Been using the computer a little. So, Senior Center and Athletic Complex is where the majority of all your present programming takes place. So, we evaluated things, and we looked at safety issues, we looked at ADA, we looked at computer safety. CPSI can sort of apply around safety inspections, see what's good. And so, we went through here, there's a lot of ADA concerns, we fund ADA construction and things, so. That's, let's see, which park was that, was that Wood Creek? Yeah. So, and Luke Creek is used a lot, as you saw, some pictures. And so, these are just examples, if you see the grill over there here, you know, that's not ADA accessible. Playgrounds are pretty good. Bathrooms need to be made accessible. For instance, the basketball goals, they're, once you get there, they're accessible, but we need a way to get there with the handicap parking. The parking lot can be gravelled, but the handicap spaces need to be paved with concrete, just basically like that. People along here, Cumberland City Park, they have issues there. Our grant can be used for removal of the school building, so we just found that out, and we saw it, it was huge. Because if you live in Cumberland City, you come out the front doors, if you live around the park, and you see a very old school building sitting there. And there's pictures, over on the right, you'll see the school building. And that area could be used for a park as well. Isis Creek, we got, I don't have pictures of that, we just got them today, but basically, you have three picnic tables, a single vote ramp, and two parking offices. And there's ADA issues there. Stewart County Athletic Association, this hasn't been updated, but the ball field lighting before, because some of those lighting poles are falling, and the lighting needs to be addressed. And it's a safety issue as well, with the lighting issue, there's some ADA issues there. You have a great bathroom that was built by volunteers, and it's incredible. Probably need to look at the essential stance somewhere down the line, and our grants can cover all of these things. I won't get y'all, you know what, your county has great resources there for other things, and that's gonna bring, so we're gonna go quickly to, let's see, we'll go to executive summary. So, this is kind of the, I told the high school today, students, I said, this is like the clipped-up version, and only one high school student, you might clip it up to work, so. I guess they might Google it, right? So, here's our, so these are, not disavowing, this is, you know, we're looking at this as professional, these are findings, things are recommendations. We want, and some of these are on here to comply with grant requirements. We want access and for everyone, programming for everyone, and we also would like to see, you know, ADA improvements. Activities and programs, that's a theme throughout the surveys. People want opportunities not only for the children, but for themselves, and as they become seniors, they want opportunities to walk, to recreate different ways. We saw a real need for community parks. And because, again, eighty-six percent of your residents live outside the two municipal municipalities, which is very unusual, and so, we would like to see, we're recommending community parks in all the communities and/or districts, and I have a map down here, if, let's see if I can find that. There we go. So, the students did this map, they do all the, this work is great. So, the parks that you control through your cities and counties are the two parks in Cumberland City, that's Cumberland City Park, the Isis Park, and then Luke Creek, and then the Stewart County Sports Complex. If you look, it's like a donut almost, except for the bottom right-hand corner, you know, there's not a park in District Four, there's not a park in District Three, there's not a park in District Two, Five, Seven, well, Seven, just. And the other one, so, we're recommending, when we met with communities, people want a park in their community. And we have tons of elders here, so we definitely want to, and in collaboration, you already are doing great collaboration, not only between your municipalities and your county, but also with the Corps of Engineers. We're okay, when you have a long-term lease, we can give you grant money for that park, even though you don't own it. But it either has to have a lease like that, or you own, you, you know, are Cumberland City or Stewart County. Rivers and lakes are an asset, they have thirty-eight vote ramps, and people use them. And they want water access, they want to be able to go fishing, they don't have a boat, they like to fish off the bank, they would like access. Funding, and we're just that. We want to work with you to make sure that every one of your dollars is leveraged with a, with a, when it comes to capital approvals, leveraged with the grant. That's the best way to do things, your one dollar becomes two dollars, or your one dollar becomes five dollars. And that's always a good thing, so strategically, for your staff to look at that, we'd like to see in the future, a Parks and Recreation Board that would consider, possibly, it could be as many as you like, and a lot of, we've just done one in Lake County, which is up the real foot, to the Vill area, Ridley, Ridley. And it's seven people, where two from each of the, Commissioner and the aldermen from each of the cities or counties. And it's seven people aware, two from each of the, commissioner and the aldermen from each of the cities or counties, and then a citizen, and then one agreed upon by all. Having a park and recreation board or commission can really help put you in a position for grants. And, and help as you move forward with parks and recreation, we recommend that. And then eventually, we have a grant, if you want to get to the point where you have a park director for the state, we have, we have grant money for that available as well. Has to be, you can't have never had a park director, but you have it, so the state can help you fund that position as well. Park maintenance standards, I'm putting this in here because it will help in the grant application. But basically, we believe the, let's see. That all present parks and amenities, as well as new park areas, should be kept at a level consistent with professional park standards. So you want nice, safe, accessible parks. Trails and greenways, you saw the respondents, people want a safe place to go walk, you have an incredibly safe community. Who knows, to the sheriff's department, who's here tonight. You have a safe community, people want places to go walk. Many roads and things just aren't safe to walk down. And, but if you had littleways, greenways, bikeways, those kinds of things, and that can be done. Recent community needs assessment, forty-six percent of the responders used the walking trail, Link's Creek, now I believe was done with the grant as well. The very last thing I'll show you, which has this as part of the requirement, real quickly. Let's see, we don't want to see any more facility inventories. Let's see if I can find Cumberland City, there's Cumberland City, there's Dover, Cumberland City. So, we, we are required to put these at short, mid, and long term. I like to also put highest priority, priority, important, one, two, three, where you can kind of see what the respondents were. When we went to Cumberland City, the number one thing I fought was removing that school building. At the time, we didn't think we could do it, hell, we do, so that's great. We do have to replace the school building with some kind of recreational thing, we just can't tear the building down and leave it blank, we got to put a walking trail, do something here. We, they don't have a restroom in their city park, so if you go, you've got to run back home, or. The thing they used to use at our station was not always open. They want walking trails, they need a lot of ADA systematic improvements, and so I will look through everything there, but you kind of see. They would like a pavilion in their city park, that they can have music, events, a farmer's market, and kind of a sense of place. And so you see too, why it was only, it was a second priority, but the community garden is something that's easy to do. And it's low hanging fruit, programs and activities, senior activities, pickleball, and so on. So that's Cumberland City, let's look at. So, a splash pad at Link's Creek, people would like to see that. Restroom renovation, Link's Creek over by the playground, it needs some ADA improvements and things. Not, not drastic, but some. They'd like to put a restroom by the moor ramp at Link's Creek, that moor ramp is highly used. Pickleball, seniors would like to see that, fastest growing sport, it's gone forty percent in the last two years in America. Recreation program, community center. And, and you'll see some of these on the county and also on Dover, because you don't know really who's going to end up doing some of these, or it may be toy. So that's, we can come back, if you have any questions about that. And then, we'll go lastly to Stewart County. Yeah, so the athletic complex lighting, because of safety issues and everything, is your number one high priority, and should be done in the next two, three years, as soon as possible. Because it's a safety issue, and that park is highly used. We're proposing, because you have land there, to start the, we, we saw the map for the district and community parks, so a park in Indian mound. Development of the vacant ten acres beside the athletic complex, and can be used for football, soccer, multipurpose. You see ADA improvements, programs, activities over there in the middle column, because they can be done very inexpensively, or literally paid for themselves. And we have district and community parks every, in every term, short, mid, and long term. So we should have a plan over the next ten years to try to place a park, if possible, in every district or community. All of that comes down to you guys and ladies determining, you know, where those are. And, let's see, ADA improvements all the way through. Somewhere down there, there's a theater that HDV either looked at to refurbish or maybe replace, that can be a multipurpose facility. The state's huge into using things multipurpose. And with that, we would entertain any questions that you might have.
What would we know about grants, if we put them in?
So, May fifteenth, the mayor, Mr. Parks and others have been working to, they have a, to submit the grant applications, help preliminary. Commissioner, and what they'll do is the TNEC will look at that for fifteen days and come back and say, okay, you can go to the next level. Or they may say, we need you to tweak this, or we need a little bit more information here or there. Or they can say, you're not in a position to get a grant. But the reason you're doing this master plan and everything we're doing is where you will be in a position, and I, I don't feel like that's going to happen. So, if there's anything that has to be in, that has to be in by March fifteenth, and then they would say, okay, you're eligible to formally submit the grant. And that's by April fifteenth. And then, I would say, you know, it gets to the governor's office, and it's kind of up to him, but probably within a couple months. Probably sixty to ninety days, you can find out, and then, if you get the grant, and I think you will, certainly, we're going to do everything we can to make that happen. Then in the fall, you would, late summer, fall, you would actually get a contract due at three years to get that work done. Oh, yeah, and there, was there another question back there, I saw. Yeah, she has a hand up.
I wanted to know how many people, how many surveys were actually filled out? What was your database?
We're, we're right around the fifty surveys, and then we had thirty-five, thirty, and twenty-five people at the three community meetings.
Thank you.
And you.
Again, we'd like to thank George for coming up from Bay of County, Bay of County, pretty good drive, thank you, George. Also Charles, I don't know if he's still here or not, thank you, if you're still here or not. He's been helping a lot. All right, resolution on the back page, guys, and I'm going to give you time, you've just got it tonight. This is, I don't want to downplay it, because this is mandatory through the state. However, we're not going to be bound to any of this. I, I spoke with George, he can reiterate, and I've spoken with other people that, at the state level. And they have informed us, if we make it all the way through this grant process, and we get it, and it's awarded to us, and the day before, we don't want it, we can drop it. So, it, what I'm about to tell you, is, I don't want it to scare you. Now, I set out on this grant, after I met George, me and Charles set out to get it, and it has grown into a very large number. So I gave you guys this local Parks and Recreation Fund summary of funding. I didn't want it to cost the citizens anything, and this is a fifty-fifty grant, so clearly, we're going to have to come up with money, right? No, we fixed it. So, there was a grant that come out, it's not even a grant, it was award money through the state. And I was at a mayor's conference, and one of the other mayors said, I think you guys will be eligible for some tribal money when it comes out. I had no idea what it was, so I got home, got to researching it. Turns out, it's kind of an in lieu of ta, an in lieu of tax money on some of the properties that have been in the county, where the state or federal government's come in and, and taken property and things like that. But you have to apply for it and go through this process, and I originally thought, I don't know if it would be worth it or not, until I seen the figure. We're fourth or fifth in the state, is that right? There's only thirty-two of us that were going to be even up for this money, and we, we as in Heather, applied, applied for it. After we sat down, and she said, let's go get it, and we got awarded it. And the sum is going to be right around six hundred thousand dollars, so we're not going to pay a dime for this grant when it's all said and done. We've got our first payment of two hundred and ninety-five thousand already, we're waiting a second payment of similar amount. So, the money I was going to ask for to use out of ARPA funds, I'm not, I would rather go with this, this money, this newfound money, and it is, it's going to help out a lot. So I'm going to go over this real quick. Two hundred and fifty thousand is pre-appropriated money, that y'all appropriated for the ballpark. The ballpark elected to keep that with us, to see if we were going to get this grant. If we do not receive this grant, we will disperse that check to them. If we do get this grant, they're going to double their money, automatically, okay? Cumberland City, they're going to put in fifty thousand, Dover's portion is three hundred, thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Local matching is three hundred thousand dollars, guys, but that's what we're, that's what you guys, with this appraisal, we can't say what that number's going to be until that appraisal comes back. We put it in there at three hundred thousand for that property down there, twelve, twenty-two or four acres. I've had one person tell me it's going way over that, and I've had one person say, yeah, that's probably about right, so we left it at that. We won't have a better number for you when that comes in, and we're leaving that there at three hundred thousand. And it's the local assistance and tribal consistency fund is the payment that we've already received. Correct, Heather, we've already received that one already, and that one was in the amount of two ninety-five, six, two nine. And that's what I would like to match this grant with, and it will never, it's, it's, you know, it's, so it's essentially cost of citizens zero to apply for a two-point-five million dollar grant. You have this resolution in front of you, I understand if we need to take a short recess and let you read over it, but once again, we are not bound by this, correct, George?
Correct.
We are not bound by this. This is simply to keep the grant moving and try to get in on time. Does it, do y'all like to recess, or do you, you got any, any concerns? I got it. You got it. Any discussion on passing the resolution? This resolution simply gives me permission to apply for that amount of grant.
Come over.
With no discussion, I would ask for a roll call votes to the amount of money.
Eric Watkins?
Yes.
Terry Fitch?
Yes.
Vince Gray?
Yes.
Archie Cryer?
Yes.
Alyssa Fields?
Yes.
Bradley Jones?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Mark Dorch?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Ryan Teeger?
Yes.
Rick Joyner? Randall Redman?
Yes.
Shane Hakes?
Yes.
I will say that we, we have had a couple other interests in the districts that we didn't have anything planned for. I know District Five, I spoke to a person this weekend who's interested in, may be interested in partnering with us on some land. So, that's a really good thing, and we're still searching in bumping snills, but anyway.
We're in one other hidden group area.
That, District Four, I mean, that's what we've got planned for District Four, is that, because I've already checked with Jeff, Jeff told us what we could and could not do down there. And I believe that's going to fit in right for District Four. Later on, when we go to get exactly what we're doing, that'll come back before you guys, we'll approve all that. This is just keeping the ball moving right here, and I want to let you know about that, that funding. Because six hundred thousand dollars may free up some ARPA money that we can use somewhere else, so. Also, I want to let you guys know that we did get our final disper, we did not get it received yet, we got our number in, okay? I almost misspoke there. Our, our, the dispersment, the large dispersment that come through the state for the opioid abatement money. If we, we so choose to send it back in, will be around eighty-one thousand. I'm only telling you guys that we, we don't have a timeframe to send it, send it back in to get it, to actually receive the funding yet. Because we want a mechanism laid out that we're going to be able to disperse that money. It is very, very, very strict and specific money. And I, that is, so we want a plan before, you know, I, I would like to come back and kind of get a board, I know Mr. Melissa will be good on it. Maybe the sheriff, just to get us, because there's several departments that can use this money, and then there's a lot of us that can't use this money. So, very specific money, but that's eighty-one thousand dollars. If we can get it, we want to try to get it, but we also don't want to mess up that given that. That, we're not ready to send that in, I just want to let you guys know that our awardment was eighty-one thousand, so.
Mayor, does the resolution include approving the plan?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right, so we'll carry on. With that being said, new business, do you want to have any new business?
Well, the new business, our whole business, I believe the last kind of wish to be when he voted, somebody made a motion, the secretary, to have the public safety meeting discussed dispatch. I don't know if we had that or not.
I'll, I'll check tomorrow, I'm not for sure who the chairman of that committee is.
I don't believe they've had one, so the mayor's the only one they can call.
The mayor's the only one they can call, the public safety meeting?
Yeah, because there's no, there's no chairman, they've never had it, we've never had people.
It was, well, it resorts back to the past chairman automatically, so who was that? Do y'all know who that would have been? I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
Oh, what?
The past chairman of the Public Safety Committee.
It's you, wasn't it, Sean?
I don't think so.
I'll look all that stuff up for this margin tomorrow. I'll look all that stuff up for this margin tomorrow, and we will, we will get on that. And, and see where it goes.
The only other thing I was going to add, you know, we talked about several different times. I was going to ask, trying to, going to ask Clint, how much dispatching does the city use? For the county, the rest of the?
They're somewhere between sixteen and seventeen percent.
How much money is, how much is registered?
Uh, the salaries are four hundred and fifty thousand and a half. And that's, that's really off the cuff.
I don't know what their plan is, or what they need to do, I know you should, I mean, I can't make them.
That's correct, we cannot make them pay dispatch.
It'd be hard for me, I can't pay for dispatch, it's only money, hard to reach, we'll see.
Well, you're talking about the city, man, that's District Six, that's county, that's not city. There's a city in there, but you're talking about a whole District Six, so you want to take the county out of District Six?
You're building city and county. Hey, I pay city taxes, I got a house inside the city. I don't mind to use some of that money to pay for dispatch, they use twenty percent of it. You know how many times I see an officer pull somebody over and get a speeding ticket? I bet, I don't know, what's, what is the percentage of officers called per stop compared to the city residents, you know, in the service?
Vince, I think your fights with the city council, not with the county commission. We do not have the authority for our lawyer and city assets lawyer to enforce any, any payment of any kind. We, we don't have that, as I've spoke that in the last meeting. The city has said, if the sheriff decides to add their six guys onto the radio channel that the rest of the law enforcement is on, they would take it, the city council would pay that. Until that day, they will not pay it down. I understand the sheriff's concerns, and I have gotten out of it, I've had to get out of it, there's no reason for me to be in it. There's no enforcement of it, and I mean, it's just the way it is. I think your fights with the city council, not the county commission.
I think with the city council. I'm just saying.
Only nine-one-one board.
I'm just saying that they're not going to pay, Stewart County, that the county don't need to give city, city money, give money to the city to do anything. They go faster than anything. They can use, they can use the portion of what they're taking.
I just got to paying my taxes, I took one envelope to the city and one to the county, I pay county taxes.
I do too.
So, I, I don't, do you have, anybody else have any discussion?
Hey, bro.
Yes.
I had to say, I know with the maintenance agreement, do we ever come up with anything like that?
We're not, we were not extremely happy with it, so we, we, it's, it's not finished yet. yet. I'm sorry, George, it's not finished yet. You, you guys will still have to approve that before that, of course, becomes law.
Greg, Mr. George can confirm that that doesn't necessarily have to be in place, we can almost get the grant before.
That's my next question.
Yeah. So you don't necessarily need that to apply for this.
That was initially our concern when he stated that. You think we need to take a vote? Okay. Mr. George Brogdon has asked that we take a vote to actually approve the master plan that they're putting forward, just so when he goes, he can say this master plan is approved by the county.
This, this plan allows the county and the cities separately or together to apply for grants, so you got to have this, it needs to be qualified. So until that's approved, we can't apply. We can apply, but they're going to knock us out.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Dorch is second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, guys, we're going to, hold on one second for you, we're going to adjourn from this, we are also going to have to enter into an executive session at first, so don't take off when we get done here, but motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we would ask that the public would leave, we will be discussing a lawsuit that concerns the Jewel Corporation, we will not be discussing anything, we will be listening as per state standards and Charles will be informing us what's going on. So thank.